Good evening, everyone. Everyone. The next meeting will be extended for all the silence. This speaker was a member of our office by department. The member for all of those. Good evening, everyone here in the hall and those of you who are joining us via Zoom this evening. It's 28 years of annual budget hearing. We can have two public hearings. The first one will be to introduce the law. Before I start, I want to place on the record that trustee Archie Chan is excused with the pardon. The first of the laws, the purposes of the lawful override, if necessary, for tax cap. Hold on standing on of this year 2.5%. I'll ask those of you who are there to read the remarks.
Thank you, Mayor. Legal notice. Notice of public hearing Incorporated Village of Flore Park, House Local Law Number One, 2021. Please take notice that pursuant to Article Nine of the New York State Constitution, provisions of the Code of the Village of Flore Park and the Municipal Home Law of the State of New York, a public hearing will be held in Village Hall courtroom, Incorporated Village of Flore Park, One Floor Boulevard, Flore Park, New York, on fourteenth day of April, 2021, at eight P M. Meeting will be for a public hearing. Consider the enactment of a local law entitled Local Law to Overwrite Tax Levy Limit established in General Municipal Law, Section Three, there, safe. Since there will be limited space for in-person attendance in this courtroom, the hearing will be available by way of video teleconference as indicated on the link. I write in the notice, meeting ID eight seven four, two eight one nine, two eight six seven, passcode one four six three five five. The dial in one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Meeting ID of eight seven four, two eight one nine, two eight six seven, and the passcode one four six three five five. This local law shall take effect immediately upon its filing with the Secretary of State, date of April ninth, sorry, date of April second, 2021, and published again April ninth, 2021. I order the board of trustees, the Village of Flore Park, Susan Walsh, Village Park. This legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Village of Flore Park, Village website according to law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Board has previously adopted a major declaration meaning that proposed local law has no significant impact on the New York. Just by way of exclamation, we introduce this floor as a month for the purpose of in budget planning. Meaning in case we did have to exceed the tax cap that we would be able to, we need this local law to do so. The intent is not to exceed the tax cap and when we get into the budget hearing, the Village Administrator, Vanberg, will explain the tax cap and how we will be below the tax cap. With that said, for anyone on the board that would like to comment? Anyone in the public, either in person or online, would like to make a comment on this? I don't see any online right now. All right, with that being it, there's no comments. I'd like to ask for a motion to reserve decision opposed this public hearing. Second. This is the mayor, please pull the lever.
Trustee Vabanya?
Aye.
Trustee Chiara?
Aye.
Trustee Stewart? And maybe the Charles?
Aye.
Yes. Yeah, it's better. Thank you. Now moving to, I guess, everyone to hear the annual budget hearing. Once again, on the record, I'm trying to back it up. So once again, this is the budget hearing for the year fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Before we get into it, I'd like the Village Administrator, Vanberg, to first read the remarks.
Thank you again, Mayor. Legal notice to taxpayers of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park. Notice is hereby given that tentative budget for Incorporated Village of Flore Park for year June one, 2021, and May thirty first, 2022, has been completed by the Budget Officer and a copy filed in the Office of the Village Hall, where a saying may be available for public inspection during office hours, Monday to Friday, of eight thirty A M to four thirty P M, until April fourteenth, 2021. The budget hearing will be held Wednesday, April fourteenth, 2021, and will begin at eight P M, immediately after proposed local law number one of 2021 public hearing in Village Hall courtroom, One Floor Boulevard, Flore Park, New York, and be also available by way of video conference or teleconference as follows, the link listed in the public notice, the meeting ID of eight seven four, two eight one nine, two eight six seven, passcode one four six three five five. Dial in one six four six five five eight eight six five six. The purpose of the budget hearing is to hear any and all interested persons in connection therewith to consider such budget for adoption. Only budget business shall be discussed at this meeting. Copies of the tentative budget will be available commencing Monday, April fifth, between hours of eight thirty A M to four thirty P M in Village Hall. The maximum compensation proposed... The maximum compensation proposed from all sources under such budget to the village justice is ten thousand. The mayor, ten thousand, and each trustee, five thousand per year. By order of the board of trustees, Susan Y. Walsh, Village Park, date of April second, 2021, published again on April ninth, 2021. This legal notice has been published in the official paper of the Incorporated Village of Flore Park and the Village website according to law.
Thank you, Mr. Vanberg. I guess I've been on the board for over ten years. In the past, we used to go page by page and last year, we moved quite quickly to do this whole by Zoom. We put a different approach and we're going to stick with that approach where we're going to go all by department. So we try to keep you updated with the page law. For those of you on Zoom, our preparation and field's preparation, and then we go through it, the page that we're speaking on will appear. So with that said, Vanberg, could it explain the tax cap?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Done with the tax cap. Thank you. This is the village's ninth proposed budget after the enactment of the New York State Tax Cap Law that went into effect starting in twenty twelve, twenty thirteen fiscal year. Don't you hear me? By now, most are generally familiar with what is referred to as the two percent tax cap. But there's still a good amount of confusion about the tax cap due primarily, I believe, to the fact that there are several factors that go into calculating the tax cap. We on the screen, you can see the formula for calculating the tax cap. But first of all, the tax cap is not two percent. It is a formula established by the state based on information and factors set by the state. The biggest of these factors is the allowable growth factor, which is assigned each year by the state to four municipalities based on when the municipality's fiscal year starts. The allowable growth factor is set at either two percent or the rate of inflation, whichever is lower. And that is where the two percent tax cap derives its name. In past years, the allowable growth factor for Flore Park has ranged from a low of zero point one two percent to a high of two percent. This year, the allowable growth factor for municipalities like Flore Park, each have a fiscal year beginning June first, is one point three one percent. Another factor that impacts the tax cap is the tax base growth factor. The tax base growth factor is also assigned by the state to each separate municipality and reflects the determination of the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance as to the increases in the tax, in the tax base based on such things as new construction or measurable improvements to taxable property within the village. The tax base growth factor for Flore Park for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year is zero point one six percent, or just under two tenths of one percent. Yet another factor that impacts the tax cap is the available carryover. The available carryover applies if, in the prior fiscal year, the village's tax levy was less than the full tax cap amount allowed for that year. The available carryover applies to Flore Park this year because last year, the village's tax levy was less than one half of the tax levy increase provided under the tax cap. Last year, the tax cap that applied to the village was two point oh two percent, but the village's tax levy for last year, the village's tax levy increase for last year was zero point nine eight percent. That was because last year, to provide some financial relief to village residents during COVID, significant cuts were made, vacancies and positions were unfilled. The dollar amount at which the tax levy increase was below the tax cap last year was two hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and twenty three dollars. That amount is the available carryover and can be applied to the tax cap amount this year. So, based on the tax cap, so, sorry, so basically, one point three percent allowable growth factor, the point one six percent tax base growth factor, and the available carryover of two hundred and seventy six thousand dollars, roughly, the tax cap for Flore Park in the coming fiscal year is two point five four percent. This year, proposed tax levy, which is at the first page of the budget, which we'll begin to later, is two point three nine percent of tentative budget. This is not exceeding the tax cap. I'll just go through it one at a time just to the chart that you have on the screen. The prior, last year, the tax cap, I mean, sorry, the total tax levy was twenty five million, seven hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars. That amount is multiplied by the growth factor mentioned before, which is point one six percent. That results in an amount of twenty five million, seven hundred and ninety two thousand, nine hundred and thirty seven dollars. To that, you add whatever pilot payments are made. Flore Park used to have a pilot, pilot being the payment of the local taxes, basically agreed to by the County Industrial Development Agency. We haven't had a pilot for the last few years, so that number is unaffected. It stays at twenty five million, seven hundred and ninety two thousand, times thirty seven dollars. To that, you apply the allowable growth factor. As I mentioned before, for all municipalities, the June first start date of their fiscal year, the allowable growth factor is one point three one percent. That results in an amount of twenty six million, one hundred and thirty, eight hundred and twenty four thousand. And that you adjust the pilot amount down. To that, you add two hundred and seventy six thousand, nine hundred and twenty three thousand carryover from last year. So the tax cap for Flore Park for this year would be twenty six million, four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and forty six dollars. That'll be two point five four percent of the twenty five million, of the two point five four percent increase over the twenty five million, seven hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollars. That was last year's tax levy. Tax levy reflected at the first page of the budget book, the tax levy for this year is twenty six million, three hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred dollars. That results in an increase of two point three nine percent over the twenty five million, seven hundred and fifty one thousand, seven hundred and thirty four dollar tax levy from last year. If we repeat again, we're not exceeding the tax cap on basically tentative budget. But also, it's important to note, tax cap is a cap on the tax levy. It's not a tax, it's not a cap on the tax rate. Tax levy is the amount by which the village needs to raise taxes on all residents and businesses in the village after taking into consideration all of the sources of revenue. It's an important aspect of the budget and that sets, an important aspect of the budget is that it sets the tax rate for the coming year. It's the tax rate, not the tax levy, which is multiplied by the assessed value of your home or property, which determines your tax bill for the coming year. Don't get me wrong, the tax levy, which the tax cap addresses, is very important in determining the tax bill. But the tax levy is only, only a component in determining the tax rate. All taxable properties in the village are subject to the same tax rate, the village portion of their taxes. The tax rate is calculated by taking, I don't know if you should switch to the earlier thing again, taking the tax levy and dividing by the assessed valuation of all taxable properties. For the coming fiscal year, twenty one, twenty two, tax rate calculation is set forth in the bottom of Roman numeral page one, Roman numeral page one. Proposed tax levy of twenty six million, three hundred and sixty six thousand, five hundred dollars is divided by the assessed valuation of all taxable properties, which is the other page, bottom of page, one hundred and eight nine thousand, sorry, one hundred and eighty nine million, one hundred and fifty four thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars, which results, which results in a tax rate of thirteen point nine three nine one for one hundred dollars assessed value. That's the number at the bottom of Roman numeral page one. The next page, Roman numeral page two, at the bottom, also reflects the tax rate from last year, which was thirteen point six four four five for one hundred dollars assessed valuation. This year's proposed tax rate of thirteen point nine three nine one for each one hundred dollars assessed valuation is an increase of two point one six percent of the last year's tax rate. Percentage increase of the tax rate is lower than the percentage increase of tax levy because the assessed valuation of all properties in the village has increased in the last year. On the same page, Roman numeral two, at the line above where the tax rate is indicated, you can see taxable value of properties in the village increased from one hundred and eighty eight million, seven hundred and thirty two thousand, nine hundred and sixty one dollars last year to one hundred and eighty nine million, one hundred and fifty four thousand, five hundred and seventy one dollars for the upcoming twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year. A four hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollar increase. If the assessed value of all taxable properties has stayed exactly the same as last year, then the tax rate would have matched the tax levy increase of two point three nine percent. Since the assessed value of all taxable properties grew by four hundred and twenty one thousand, six hundred and twenty one dollars, the tax rate grew at a slower rate, two point one six percent. So the tax rate multiplied by the assessed valuation of your own property determines the amount of your village's tax bill for the coming year. Set forth in the village items, which are mailed out and which is online, we'll be talking then. The average residential property in the village is assessed at thirty seven thousand, eight three dollars. The village items paid, you have on screen, reflects the average assessed value, reflects that average assessed value of Flore Park. The average residential property assessed at thirty seven thousand, eight three dollars received a tax bill of five thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars based on proposed tax rate of thirteen point nine three nine one for each one hundred dollars assessed value. Same property for the last year's tax rate of thirteen point six four four five for each one hundred dollars assessed value had a tax bill of five thousand, fifty nine dollars. So this proposed tax rate represents a one hundred and ten dollar increase for the average residential property. Of course, that is for the average residential property. If the assessed value of your property is higher or lower than the average, then of course, your tax increase will be higher or lower than one hundred and ten dollars, but it will increase by the same percentage, which is two point one six percent. Finally, Mayor, I just want to thank all the department heads from the board and staff, all efforts and process this year, and all extraordinary efforts of the past year in COVID. All departments have performed very well over the course of the year.
Thank you, Mr. Vanberg. I know a lot of work goes into this, especially getting the, we just went through, that's a simple form, it's very complicated, and we do appreciate you trying to simplify that for us and our residents. So again, thanks, everyone, for coming. Hopefully, I mentioned this at many civic meetings in the past, there's going to be one meeting that'll come through here, this is the meeting you'll hopefully learn a lot about where we spend and spend the money, and I believe you spend it widely, and we keep this village in a great place. So hopefully, you stick around with us on this. So this year's budget process has been heavily influenced by the coronavirus outbreak, and affected us all in many areas in significant ways for the past twelve months. It had a direct effect not only on the economy as a whole, but on local economy as well. For the past fiscal year, the software of the village had seen a reduction in non-actual revenue such as parking meter fees, which is on line seventeen forty, seventy forty three, and twenty five forty one, fine, which is line twenty six, and, and pool memberships, which I believe trustee should do it, it's to be done later. For many years, these numbers were steady and easily predictable when establishing the annual budget. Unfortunately, due to the lack of clear visibility as to when the pandemic will end and the economy hopefully returns to pre-pandemic levels, in order to provide a responsible and functional budget, we had to reduce certain revenue points. Although the revenue points had to be decreased, unfortunate, fortunately, certainly, expense lines had to be increased due to contract agreements, significant and significant increase in pension contributions. Fortunately, the American Rescue Plan will provide additional funding to local governments such as Flore Park, and therefore, cost expenses and head services, services will only be minor. We have added a new revenue point by four seven eighteen for the anticipated receipt of funds under the American Rescue Plan. At this time, we, and for that matter, any municipality in New York State has not been provided a firm amount of how much we will receive. With that said, based on how much told to Nicon, Senator Schumer, we conservatively estimated the amount to be approximately five hundred and thirty one thousand dollars, which is based on two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars from one revenue of parking fees and three hundred and three thousand on the most revenue on full subscriptions. Even with all the aforementioned, along with other challenges of twenty twenty one, for example, tropical stormings, the most winter storms we've seen in years, the village continued with various capital projects and initiatives such as the reconstruction of Flore Park, the initiation of changing all streetlights in the elderly, etc., all of providing essential services that have been a hallmark of Flore Park for decades. Some items that I'd like to point out on the expense side. First, there are certain decreases in certain departments due to retirements, most sudden, slightly, slight increases in the deputy treasurer assessors' office due to merit raises to the exempt staff. Next, the pinch point, which is line nineteen ninety, page eighteen, is increasing to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars primarily due to the following increases, following increases to convert to first dollars working account insurance and of course, the total salaries are due to exempt employees, which will be constrained and shallow for you to dedicate as they'll be retiring in the near. The Board recently decided to convert first dollars working to account as the cost has significantly been lowered and had been in the best and elimination of risk of the village being self-controlled up to seven hundred and fifty thousand for police department personnel and five hundred thousand for all other personnel who work in the first place. The cost of this increase is a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. And lastly, approximately sixty five percent of the increase in the amount of revenue required to be raised by real property taxes this year is due to the increase mandated by the state for the police employee retirement funds, which is line to nine oh one oh, nine oh one five, page fifteen one. These numbers are given to us by the state, and in fact, the state implicitly endorsed that even though the stock market recognized as a significantly increase in increasing the employee, employee marriage contributions due to heads of volatility in the market. Although the markets can be volatile, we need to be assured that in future years, if there are dips in the market, any increase in the pension contributions is offset and minimal through the taxpayers to have a contributive extra in the market dynamics. Before we move into the individual departments, I'd like to thank Village Administrator, Treasurer, Vanberg, Deputy Treasurer Kathleen Mack, along with their staff, and the tireless efforts and pulling together the rest coming years of it. This process starts late December, very early, pretty much nonstop until we get to tonight. Additionally, I would like to thank all the upper heads and supervisors, which I believe almost everyone's here, so thanks for coming out. The library worth of efforts and inputs for drafting the budget for their respective departments. Lastly, just walking the pillar, and I'd like to thank former mayor Ron Arroyo for his efforts in putting this budget together. He was actively involved during the last three or four months with this budget. As we all know, it took a lot of perspicacious while in pain and the job may have been most impressive on this demand with your efforts, and we appreciate your input in this idea of budget. With that said, I mean, we'll move to, I believe, trustee Chiara for the top five.
Thank you, Mr. Vanberg. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, I really appreciate you doing that. The Police Department budget is shown on page nineteen and twenty. Commissioner of the Flore Park Police Department is to protect and provide services for our community and this year, having performed under the unprecedented times of pandemic and the ongoing police reform, a guide to continue to serve our village with dedicated professionalism and compassion for all the coming contact with it. The department responded to four thousand, seven hundred and fifty six calls for service, issuing eight hundred and seventy one moving violation summonses, along with eleven hundred and forty two parking summonses. They have taken twenty nine arrests and served twenty nine summonses and village ordinance violations. The department strategically and tactically managed five demonstrations that took place in the village, providing a secure and safe environment for all that participated. Their professionalism, their professionalism was clearly exhibited by the manner in which they were conducted, resulting in no recorded major incidents. They did an excellent job. The department also took part in the New York State Police Reform and Re-Event Collaborative by collaborating with the village committee and residents through a fair report that was submitted to the state. The report highlighted their willingness to serve our village by being well-trained and prepared to address the needs of our community. Our police commissioner, two attendants, five sergeants, one detective, and twenty four police officers currently in employment. There are six police communication operators, six neighborhood aides, seven part-time school crossing guards, and one part-time administrator aide. The operating budget had an increase this year of zero point five percent, or forty three thousand, five hundred dollars. This increase was due in part to personal expenses for PPA and CSEA contractual agreements noted on line zero one, zero zero, and termination payments on line zero one, zero three. Combining lines zero four four five and four five five, subscription tax and repairs to office equipment show a savings of eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty two dollars, reducing the police budget with an increase of zero point five percent increase. I would like to thank our police department and our appreciation of the village's task and activity and service for our community. In these very turbulent times, we support it for doing the important job keeping us protected and safe, and thank you for staying safe.
Thank you, trustee Chiara. Deputy Mayor Ron, is that close works? Yes, what? No, we will, at the end of the presentation, we'll have time to talk.
Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you and thank you to those of you on Zoom for joining us as well. Tonight, I will be covering the Department of Public Works budget, the Recreation Department's budget, and for Village Studios budget. I'll start with Public Works. As I go through that budget, because it's a very, very large one in terms of its scope and size and complexity, so let me know what page number I'm on as we go. So for the Department of Public Works, Flore Park DPW is at the heart of our village operations. DPW's complexity spans thirteen different areas of operations with approximately fifty staff members who are highly skilled in their areas of expertise. Superintendent Kevin Canane, Assistant Assistant Superintendent, General Assistant Ray, provide extraordinary leadership. I'm going to start out on page fifteen of the budget. And that page, towards the bottom of the first column of items is called shared services building. And that page, towards the bottom of the first column of items is called shared services building. It is in this budget area where the maintenance and upkeep of our village floor park buildings are accomplished. You'll see many offsets with expenditures that are reduced while others are increased, enabling the budget to remain relatively constant. In the building budget, you will see four oh six and four oh six is the last three digits I'm talking about. It goes from one hundred down to four sixty. I'm looking at line four oh six, which is supplies. You'll see that increase to continue paying for disaffected supplies which are used throughout the village. Four fifty further down, four fifty, the village hall has been increased by twenty-five thousand dollars for needed upgrades and repairs in this building. Items like carpeting, which is currently torn, worn, and taped together in many places, bathrooms with obsolete fixtures and some issues with other areas of compliance, outer doors that are in need of repair, that they operate with full security and easily, and water hydrant rental, which is number four nineteen, which in this case has been raised by sixty-two thousand dollars, driving our building's total increase from two point eight percent to ten point six percent, as you see at the bottom. The reason for this large increase in water and hydrants, which you'll see reflected in other areas of the budget, as you may recall, there are discussions about construction on Sisney and Magnolia. New York State has changed its requirements, I guess in response to federalized ones, to the water standards and increased the level of what the standard should be. And as a result, the water authority here has had to do a tremendous amount of work in constructing apparatus that can provide treatments that will improve the quality of the water. They've been given a brief timeline to do this, and that's because of the speed at which the projects have got to be done and it's got to be completed, as well as the additional devices that they have to add, as well as other things. Their recent improvement has caused pretty high rates in the increase in the water rates reflected in our D P W, as I said, by an increase of six to two thousand dollars. Going on to the next page, which is page sixteen, it is called Central Garage. Sixteen forty is the number of that entire area of central garage items. This code covers the maintenance and repairs of our village's video vehicles, which cost all of the village departments totals close to a hundred. You will see decreases in several codes as new equipment is purchased. That equipment is no longer needed and the supplies are inventoried continually. All that remains in inventory is used in subsequent years. So that's important to keep in mind that the D P W leadership and supervisors have worked very hard on keeping it accurate in this inventory control numbers. And what has they enabled us to do, which you will see throughout their budget, is many supply lines that have decreased because we are able to use supplies back or left inventory at the end of last year. In the one hundred personnel code, you will see that staffing has been reduced, and we are working in the area with one less person, full-time mechanic, who will be replaced by mechanic aides who work under the supervisor. So this staffing arrangement has also led to savings in the way that we can have mechanic aides learning what our experienced mechanics do. So this has also told decrease in total expenditures there for the next year. The next code is fifty-ten code is on page twenty-eight, if you can get there. It's called D P W Administration. It's by ten dollars thirty, and it's on page twenty-eight. This section is for the running of the whole D P W operation with approximately fifty staff members. The budgetary changes, first of all, in the one hundred area, we have staff and responsibility changes, which have resulted in reductions in overtime. Some of our leading staff leaders are the expertise in this integration. In this, there have been merits for some of them reflected in that code. In radio repair, which is four thirty-five, there are reductions due to radios. We don't have to keep repairing them and we don't have to keep purchasing them. And reduce conference attendance, both attendance and conference, and using virtual conferences instead, which has worked out very well this year. You see, very, very slight increase in that area. Going on to page twenty-nine, next page. You will see the street maintenance, transportation, fifty-one, ten code. This is our highway department and Department of Road Repairs. There are approximately thirty-seven miles of roads and parking lots in the village hall park. Sweeping, white-striking, sanding, siphoning, and many other functions are among the building responsibilities in this department. The village will continue to work on Fort Bullard with road reconstruction following last fall's completion in curbs and drains. This project has been funded by the L O R R as part of the third-track project memorandum of understanding. So that is something that benefits us greatly to have Fort Bullard Street Light Fort Bullard reconstructed at someone else's cost. And although a number of streets have been designated for complete construction or repair, the priorities may change due to the rate of deterioration of certain roads, ways, or other factors. As of this date, scooter and Hinsdale from Gerald Oak to Lowell have been brought to engineering phase and are going up to bid. Reductions in expenditures due to supply inventories four oh six that will carry the department to next year, and the purchase of new apartment, new equipment four sixty, which reduces the need for repairs. Code four fifty is allocated for items such as additional handicap curbs and repairs associated with other projects such as pre-able and other projects that have been done. Code four fifty-eight, with one hundred eighty thousand dollars imposed, is the sidewalk repair program, which will be offset by progress funding revenues and payments from property owners to the sidewalks that are being constructed. This is our highway department. The next up is page thirty, which is our snow removal code fifty-one forty-two. This is self-explanatory. Funds are allocated for contingency lines for snow removal, as I believe Mr. Biggert and Mary were talking about. Contingency lines follow page eighteen. It's a chart, a spreadsheet that comes after page eighteen. Estimates about snow removal, or estimates about snow removal, a whole nine months ahead of the winter season are challenging, and contingency funds may be flexibly used for contingencies. In code two hundred, which is equipment, and this no longer has also planned for purchase. And in four six, supplies, D P W has supplies like sand, salt, and calcium chloride in inventory, again enabling a reduction of those expenditures. We are really fortunate to have a department that is very skilled for doing inventory control so that supplies are utilized very carefully and continued to use in the public power here. Going on to page thirty-one, which is transportation and street lighting. This section carries site, and the reason is L E D lighting. Plans are to complete L E D lighting in the village beginning in this summer, with the final phase of Centennial Gardens exterior lighting on the floor parkway following. Budget reductions are due to supplies, again, that we haven't stocked before the four oh six, and to anticipated reductions needed for outside contractors for repairs, another reduction of four thirty-five. Increases in four fifty are certain major leaders and the last phase of the Centennial Gardens L E D lighting installation, which is very important. So L E D lighting will take a big place, prominence, in D P W's work this year coming very soon, and watch for more to follow. Next is, you can see that D P W is a very large and complex operation. So next, going to page thirty-two, which is off-street parking. Function code is fifty-six fifty, and I'm talking about some of the items here. Including our parking meter expenditures, all are reduction due to changing needs. Fire, three more spur rentals, these which are located at the bottom in code five hundred, have been suspended due to the Village of Bull Park's third-track agreement with the L O R R. Again, we have the second part then, memorandum of agreement from two thousand seventeen, I believe, where we have gotten benefits from the L I R R, monetary benefits due to the time they spent here and any changes that happened in our village as a result. Okay, next would be off-street parking. That's fifty-six fifty, included our parking meter expenditures, boys do this sort and premium spur. So, next page is thirty-three, that is economic assistance and opportunity public. I would talk about four oh five, again, which is involves the railway, the rest, I have a line item there. That one talks about anticipated expenditures, offsetting revenues in the Community Benefit Fund to two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This will be revenue that is received from the Community Benefit Fund from the third-track and will be the L I R R. The revenue is on page five, if you pull back to include the revenue codes. And this is the place where we are putting in the line for that expenditure. That's what has to be imposed revenue and expenditure side of sort of second. Okay, going on to code seventy-one ten on page thirty-five. This is parks. This is not recreation parks. This is keeping our parks beautiful and good work. This section covers D P W services to approximately ten parks and properties. Some of the parks are little mini parks and some are bigger, from parks like the Adams Park and the Walnut Park in the middle of our neighborhoods to Centennial Gardens, our largest park. You'll see reductions due to elimination of laborer in the one hundred position. You will see supply four oh six inventories and reduced needs there. Minimal equipment needs in two hundred at this time. The eight percent increase in code four nineteen is back with the water, which I explained before. It's a two thousand dollar increase, and it's due to the New York State requirements that have imposed regarding the higher standards of treatment of water and the limited amount of time we have to do those projects. The noteworthy expenditure is one oh two overtime, because that includes overtime for special events like our holiday festivals, the street theaters. And very important, something which we worked very hard to do, is that we now have, and had for quite a while, weekend trash collections in the business district. They have, in most cases, tremendously improved the tremendous trash overflow we have seen in our receptables during the weekends of the downtown Avenue, Jethro Trump hike, and somewhat over everything as well, too, but we now have that in place. The next area is refuse and garbage on page forty-two. This is our sanitation department. This massive and powerful department includes about twenty staff members, including drivers, recyclers, ten refuse and recycling trucks, including, to good news, three of those trucks purchased in two thousand nineteen. So that's tremendous importance that we have equipment that size and cost that is that new. Our crews collect both refuse and upgrade snow removal equipment. So ten on the season, there, doing a lot of different tasks. And I might add that my recollection is through this year's storms, one in August, and three snow and ice storms in February, I don't think we missed a refuse collection day. Despite the fact they were plowing, I believe they continue to collect refuse without interruption. So that department is being applauded a lot. All the expenditures are reductions due to the purchase of new equipment, two hundred and four sixty, open to eight-some equipment and no missing repairs, a retirement in code one hundred, and better pricing in code four oh six, which is supplies. Next is code eighty-one seventy, which is street cleaning, and that is on page forty-three. I'm getting there on my last page of numbers for D P W. Couple more to go. This section of D P W, street cleaning, has two licensed motor equipment operators and EOs who operate two street sweepers and other related equipment. Expenditures are constantly increased for personnel from one hundred due to raises in compensation to them. The purchase of a new street sweeper will be forthcoming, not in this budget, but soon, because of, due to ages and wear and tear. As you can imagine, those pieces of equipment are working very hard and show it. So they will be hearing about the replacement of this sweeper soon. Next, we have page forty-five, which is storm sewers, code eighty-five forty. This section of D P W is focused on the maintenance of the Village of Fort Bullard's storm sewer system. A twenty thousand dollar allocation, code four thirty, includes important engineering services. I think as we look at the maintenance and possible repair of our storm drains, people don't realize that these are not just hold around, they're complex systems that pull the water around the street and send it to where it is going next to make sure our streets aren't flooded. So engineering services that are listed in professional services in point there to be very important. Going to the last section of D P W. On page forty-six is shade trees, code eighty-five sixty. This is another exciting code because what it represents for our village. Our village is known for its beautiful trees, old and younger, parks, and tree-lined streets. Maintaining these trees and the planting of new trees are important initiatives carried out by our knowledgeable and proficient tree staff, which includes two pruners, tree pruners, one laborer, and two summer stashers. Salary and a stipend for the senior pruner are included in the increases in code one hundred. That's the first one. Training in electrical hazards awareness, code four eighty, is a priority. So I just want to highlight that to you, that our tree pruners, in addition to having to be very careful of cherry pickers there in our trees, have to be very, very knowledgeable with electrical hazards. So that's a priority training. Reductions includes those who are greatly reliant on our own V N P pruners. We'll go four thirty, for example, and four thirty-five. We are, because of our expertise in house, we are far less reliant on outside contractors to prune trees, unless we have a case like the mid-last August fourth, where we had a massive number of trees that had to be removed and cut down sadly very quickly. But normally, ours do it. And it's also due to new equipment in codes four forty-five and four sixty. Our village continues to be proudly recognized as Tree City USA and by our Order Day Foundation. If you like a new tree for the grassy strip in front of your house, call D P W at three two six six three two oh. That's three two six six three two oh. And that brings our D P W complex budget to an end. I want to thank all of our, Superintendent Genain, Assistant Superintendent Brady, our supervisors, who are specialized in each or some of these different areas that this budget is divided into, the fourteen areas by the way, our workers, and especially the hours they put in after the August fourth storm and around the month of February, kind of whatever we had, and kind of impacted. of whatever we had, and kind of impacted that on our village. Thank you for listening to D P W. I'm now going on to another favorite, the village, and that is starts on page thirty-six, and that is culture and recreation playground. We do the next two pages of that, that's thirty-six and thirty-seven. Code seventy-one forty on page thirty-six. And that's our regular recreation program. Our four park rec center continues to be a beautiful complex with a range of features, those of all ages, including rec building, human complex, six baseball fields, a hockey rink, basketball tennis, volleyball courts, a refurbished shelter house, and it's been wonderful, it's the use of it for meetings is increasing tremendously, and it's great to have that space in our ever-popular tiny town, Landville. After the Village of Four Parks was committed to open the rec in about facilities in late spring twenty-twenty, many found our outdoor facilities the place to go to walk around, exercise, see friends, bring children, and cheer on our four park willie, then soccer, and then roller hockey teams. Heavens and the park were spectacular last summer, as everyone gathered safely to enjoy one of the few places open, especially in the beginning of summer of twenty-twenty. We plan to offer our regular recreation schedule programs with the appropriate safety protocols. Our staffing includes approximately thirty-three full-time and seasonal staff members. Code one hundred personal services has a nine percent increase, which reflects, not across-the-board increases for every staff member, nine percent, that's not what it is, what it does reflect is increases, it does reflect increases for all staff, but it does also reflect raises for staff members as they took on more responsibilities, some quite significantly, or as they were added to the staff. Supervisors were something, we added to the staff supervisors who were more experienced than some of our other supervisors in terms of being there during hours when there was high occupancy, I guess, rest, guest rest of the park a lot and all along, we wanted a higher level of supervision, so that's what the personnel code increase brought us there. Plus budgeting in the event of a raise in the federal minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. We know that during the coming fiscal year, which goes all the way to next day thirty-first, this budget does, that there is a chance that many of our workers, departments that are seasonal and part-time, like the recreation department and pool departments, may see an increase for employees from now making ten, eleven, twelve dollars up to fifteen dollars an hour, and we have to anticipate that, and that is included in the one hundred in the recreation code, and that's important. Increases also include the four oh five code, which is also a very happy increase, it's an increase of five thousand dollars to Centennial Gardens. Interesting, the Village of Centennial Gardens' budget allocation has been twenty thousand dollars since two thousand one, two thousand one, one year after the gardens dedication in two thousand. I know that, I was there yesterday doing a program for our youth creators and were with me, talking about the dedication in two thousand, but they haven't had a budget increase in twenty years, so we are happy to say we're adding five thousand dollars to their code. This budget line plays for landscaping, done on the interior by landscaping companies with D P W doing the large area outside of gardens fencing, equipment repairs, and other. Centennial Gardens has a tremendous support done by the Four Park Conservation Society of volunteers too. The size of the gardens and the complexity of gardens and the number of visitors coming to the gardens have all increased, I've mentioned, we used it last Thanksgiving day, we had over five hundred, Thanksgiving weekend, we had over five hundred visitors to the gardens. All that brings more work, which is on the backs of the volunteers, so we are making an increase there to help them out. Line four oh six supplies includes many consumable items that you use in recreation activities, as well as important cleaning supplies, which we know we know was increasing D P W too. And finally, a fifteen hundred dollar increase for line four nineteen, again, that's water, and I've explained the reasons for that, this water, the recreation goes to our recreation buildings and our sprinklers, which consume plenty of water. And that is our recreation budget. The next budget page is thirty-seven, which is related, it's seventy-three ten code, and it is the youth programs code, which take place in our recreation center. This wonderful section of the budget includes summer sports, arts and crafts, and kids' programs, as well as the youth programs such as Zumba, Gymnasium, Creative Yoga, and Gardens for Kids, and Centennial Gardens, which take place in the fall, winter, and spring, and on Saturdays, so we've got round the year program expenditures in these codes. Highly popular this year at last has been youth tennis for grades one to three, four to eight, and seven to twelve. As a matter of fact, when the registration lines for the spring youth tennis went out of the parking lot, the rec sector out towards New High Park, they added on instructors and sections for this, it's very popular, so we're happy to offer it. Special activities also include this year's Easter Bunny photo op, which drew two hundred and fifty, we had two hundred and fifty small children there, we were very excited to be there and their families, we welcomed them to Centennial Gardens on the warm sunny spring day at Old Wilkesboro, that's one of the special activities we also use. Lines also are in special activity for some of our programs, like primary rec, arts and crafts, tennis, and sports, it was taught by Peter Brannan, who is their contractor, local contractors for those programs. Thanks go to our twenty-six hourly, part-time, and seasonal staff members who make recreation around the year fun for our youth, and relatively no changes in their twenty-one, twenty-two budget. In this case, thanks go to Superintendent Kurt Mayford, who is here, to Pool Director Tom Dillon, who yes, plays a role in planning and carrying out and working with our recreation program as well as many, well as many talented supervisors who are grownups or young adults who have been to our park programs and now coming back to do the favor and teach the younger counterparts, as well as counselors and many teachers who are doing fine job, fine jobs in all these programs. So that's it for our recreation program there, and you and I are both, we have to adhere, this is the last program I'm talking about for budget planning. That is on page fifty, this is the eighty-nine ninety code, and it is for Village Studio. This unique local government access television, television station serves the Village of Four Parks, Delver Village South, Four Parks of Stuart Manor. In addition to providing community interest programs that inform, entertain, and educate the community while publicizing the accomplishments and contributions of local organizations and individuals, the Four Village Studio Community Billboard is a scrolling display of important and interesting activities. It's important to watch that because you learn about a lot of things that are going on that without our local newspaper right now are sometimes the public sites. Four Village Studio also plays, also, Four Village Studio also continues to partner with many community organizations to produce interesting, informative programs for them. I did a few on our robotics teams a number of years ago, and plays an important role in the village's emergency management plan, which is good to know if we ever have to execute those plans. Four Village Studio also plays another tremendously important role in training interested team volunteers how to produce and edit TV shows. Jim Green, our director, has a constant stream of very bright and talented young people who go through his program, assisting him, and also learning valuable skills and creative ways to produce interesting programming, and that's just a great function he performs, and we're very thankful to him for doing that. Four Village Studios, Four Village Studio is self-sustaining, with revenue that comes from Altice USA Horizon, based on cable vision subscribership, as well as revenue that comes in from three other villages who share this service with us. The twenty-one, twenty-two revenue and expenditures are projected one hundred and fifty thousand, with increases down to maintaining important equipment, such as cameras, decks, and heaters and messes, that increases to four hundred and fifty-five. Please be sure to tune in to channel eighteen or channel twenty-eight, or go to fourds dot org website for some outstanding programs, we'd be very, very happy if you didn't use it, probably see some of your neighbors and staff members from our village leading that program, I know Mayor has done some programs, Mr. Trustee Chad has too. This time, thanks to Jim Green, our Four Village Studio Director, and his wonderful volunteers who bring such an important service to our villages, as well as three other villages. With that, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, that we made a mark here for that wonderful review of those in the office. Next week, we'll be doing the pool, trust me, Stewart.
Like our welcoming, COVID has impacted the budget in all areas of our community. No we are more than in than our swimming pools. Our revenue has significantly decreased for loss of membership. In twenty-twenty, reduced attendance in our programming, with school day programs for our youngsters, as well as gas prices. Swimming pool funds are presented on pages fifty-four to fifty-six. Line fifty thirty-one shows the amount transferred from the general fund to balance the pool budget to the bond clause for the new pool, and once again, limited revenue from last year. It has been increased to offset an anticipated decrease in membership revenue from twenty-nineteen, but with an increase over the twenty-twenty seven. The rationale for the expected increase from twenty-twenty is as follows. We anticipate a full pool season this year, opening on time, we're using twenty-nineteen membership rates. We anticipate at least of twenty twenty members to return with an added number of memberships, as residents are more comfortable joining, as word about quickly about the wonderful job our Superintendent Kurt Mayford, Rec Assistant Director, and Pool Director Tom Dillon, and their staff did all summer last year, keeping our members safe and happy, while also gradually introducing many of our long-standing aquatic programs like water fitness classes as space and regulations allow. Our expenditures include salaries for sixty-three seasonal employees, one pool director, two assistant pool directors. I'd like to take a second to address life guards salaries. We see some advertisements around the county for lifeguards with hourly salaries and recycled guards and hour lifeguards. We do this deliberately to employ as many youngsters from our community as we possibly can. For many of our youngsters, working at the pool is their first job, and one they return to throughout their high school and college years. This is a tradition we are proud to maintain. Additional expenditures include pool equipment, such as janitorial supplies, pool chemicals, and umbrellas. We will have deep spending on the stationary line, as we will have limited printing of pool hookups. We expect the majority of our members to take advantage of online re-registration, and will have printed books available at locations around the village. For example, pool buildings, shelter house, village wall, and the water. Additionally, you'll note the last expenditure, number nine nine four zero, which includes two bond payments, one for approximately forty-seven thousand, one for seventy-five dollars, for the pool share of our recreation building, and the remainder for the actual pool reconstruction. Rather than prior to twenty-twenty, the pool operating budget is self-sustaining to approximately seventy-five percent of both operations and bonding. The total of those expenditures match the one million ninety-four thousand nine hundred seventy-four dollars of proposed four point seven eight. Increase from last year. I'd like to thank our Superintendent Recreation Kurt Mayford, Recreation Assistant, and Pool Director Tom Dillon, and the dedicated hardworking staff, as we look forward to a safe, fun, built summer of twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. Thank you. So in that trusty train captain title, our current fire department, the four park fire department, with all volunteer around the station. The fire department values the rights of building residents, fire protection services, but also rescue and ambulance services. During the calendar year of twenty-twenty, the over one hundred and fifty volunteer members responded to four significant structural fires in four parks, and so many in twenty-one also, plus other fires in neighboring villages via mutual aid. Thirty-four more vehicle accidents, ninety-four more activation, seven hundred and six medical emergency, and three hundred and twelve other responses, for a total of one thousand one hundred and eighty calls for service, or an average of over three responses a day. In order to maintain the quality of service to our residents of their own customs, who for over the last one hundred years, in addition to the thousands of training hours required by our department, the department also requires funding. The overall project budget is four hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred dollars. The primary year will be at changes or files. Line four oh seven, medical supplies are being increased by five thousand dollars due to both pricing and to the supplies increasing. Line four two one, contractor maintenance agreement is used to track maintenance of new resources and maintenance contracts in the department assets. Some examples are red alert service, which is used for the transmission of the pool, pre transformation amongst them. Also flow testing, deck backs, hose testing, and ladder testing. The line is being increased by five thousand dollars primarily due to the required P S S, personal safety system testing, which is done every three years. Line four six zero prepares truck and auto, two twenty eighteen, lead to increase of one thousand dollars necessary to ensure proper immediate function of the department's vehicles. Though the vast majority of the work is done by the building cats, in circumstances, instances, the vehicles must be sent to the outside specialized. Line four seven eight, contract fire protection, increase of one thousand dollars. Her agreement, the agreement of the village, the fire department provides the aforementioned services to our residents, twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. To return, the village provides a fire department for various events, activities, and policy matters. I would like to thank outgoing Chief McAllister, incoming Chiefs of the building, ex-Chiefs Ronald Bondi, the Chief Staff, and I see Chief Dan Bennett here with us, for their time and efforts in submitting the four motion. Trustee Chad, it's us, the building department.
Thank you. The building department's back on page twenty-four. Our building department continues its efforts to automate, increase their efficiency while serving our residents. Most, if not all permits forms are now online, and staff deeply assist our residents by performing by providing information that will help A M make construction projects. The department is responsible for reviewing of all plans submitted for alterations for new structures, the issuance of permits, inspections for compliance in New York State and local codes, leading to the issuance of certificates of occupancy. The department's ability to accept scanned documents with the attitude to display them online was instrumental in keeping the A R V and C B A functioning during this pandemic. This was an indication of how well the building department operates, especially during this pandemic, easily adapting to current ways of performing their duties, they deliver a great job. For twenty-twenty, the building department, in public words, answered eleven thousand five hundred and eight phone calls of inquiries for closer service, a total of five hundred and sixty-nine permits for issue in this year. Building Department is staffed by our Superintendent, one office manager, one full-time building inspector, and two part-time clerks. This year's budget reflects an overall increase of four point two one percent. The majority of increases reflect on line one hundred, personal services salaries, for an increase of sixteen thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. There was also reductionary expense in those lines four oh seven, eight, thirty-eight, most of which were for services now being performed in the new office, or services which are no longer needed. The four point two one percent equates to a sixteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollar increase to budget. Thank you to the building department for the service and value and assistance that you require to our residents.
Thank you, Trustee Chad. And I see Trustee Stewart, the librarian, and I see as tradition, as in the library board, it's walked in every year at the same time, in the afternoon, or evening, thanks for being here.
Good evening, thanks for making the second meeting. First, I'd like to congratulate the four park letterer staff for the fabulous way they exhibited from impressive programming to online events and activities.
exhibited from in-person programming to online events and activities for people of all ages during this most unprecedented time. The recorded read-alikes and meditating art projects, recorded songs and dances were really a lifeline for many during this most trying year. Page fifty-seven shows the revenue for the library. Friends of the library continue to make generous donations to our beautiful library. Additionally, the library received a significant donation from a non-study. Line five zero three one shows the transfer from the general fund tax collection to finance the library. On page fifty-eight, we outline the library's expenses. Line zero one zero zero shows salaries for all part-time and full-time employees. A decrease because we have one less full-time employee. There's a decrease in line zero four zero seven as CPW assumes some of those costs. Remaining of the budget on page fifty-nine reflects personnel benefits. The library budget has an increase of one point six one percent. Once again, I'd like to thank the library staff, as well as the library board for all of their hard work keeping our village breathing, especially in this challenging year.
Thank you, Trustee Stewart. That concludes the overview of the various pockets. Before we get to other comments, uh, hopefully you find that this is a wonderful story here at Fort Park. A lot happens day in, day out to make our lives the best they can be living here. It's a tremendous amount of time, effort, and money that goes into um the daily operations of the Fort Park. So with that said, I'd like to open it up for public comment. I guess we'll go first with anyone in the room. Uh, if you are coming to speak, I'd just give you the main and uh, the rest. I don't see anyone, but I do have one slip from somebody, uh, Mr. Barkley. Do you want me to read the question? Uh, Mr. Barkley, eighty-eight, woman, everywhere, uh, who wanted the recaving of Fort Boulevard. He looking for updates to when that starts to take place? So, excuse me, your question?
Uh, this, well, we've been, uh, starting awards on action tomorrow. They're gonna stop moving in some of the equipment, they're gonna stop moving in the drains, the concrete drains. Uh, there might be a little bit of delay because of the rains coming in within the next two days, so they can start up, do as much work as they can. And once the drains are put in, uh, and the concrete work is completed, they'll start coming to take it, and that should take, it's telling us within the next two months it should be totally completed.
And uh, your second question is um about animal control and the two hundred and fifty dollars in budget in every year. That's foreign language that we have in town, Hampstead. Uh, if there are issues with animals, uh, most of the time, uh, the police department will handle that. Uh, there are laws on our books in the village code that specify what happens if there are the most or the only, I'm not sure that answers your question.
Well, specifically, I had in mind uh...
You might come up with this.
Specifically, I had in mind...
If you're the caller, what's the question? No, if you're the listener, just question.
You want to ask?
No, you may, you may, your name and address again.
Okay, you may not understand.
Your name.
You know, we see your name and address again.
Oh, I'm sure.
You can leave your mask on.
Frank, Frank one, eighty-eight, woman, thirty. Okay, specifically, I had in mind uh, squirrels and cats. Okay, uh, I live in a, in a street opposite four pin oak trees, and during the summer and the fall months, they're constantly dropping acorns. And of course, squirrels, that's the, and of course, food for the squirrels, which they eat, they also bury a lot. All summer long, I'm picking out pin oak uh trees, little tiny ones out of the, out of my lawn, mostly by the curbside. And uh, this is an everyday occurrence, pretty much. If I let them grow, uh, you know, you'll have a forest of pin oak trees before a park. I was sort of wondering if there's any way that you can combat that situation.
Via animal control?
Yeah.
Uh, we can certainly look into it, um, you know, we, I have not heard since, completely, we don't have enough money budgeted for animal control in the past, so, uh, we can look into it. But uh, I mean, a lot of this is nature, right? Um, you know, you can't, you know, let any of the animals...
I know years ago, the uh, village uh, used to um rent free charge traps, of which the residents would trap the animals and drill away from the village area they want. I was wondering if that's a possibility.
We can certainly look into it. I, I don't, I'm a local candidate, I don't remember that current, I'm employed, we can look into it.
I was wondering if, if there's a liability uh question here by giving the residents a trap to trap animals.
We can look into it, right?
Also, also, there's been cats. There's a lot of cats that come around too, which are uh, which I don't believe is proper. And they act all over, a lot of dogs are around now, but why should we allow cats to run around? They uh, they uh, are, I presume that are human things, but they are uh upsetting the animal, and people are surprised, and a possum, which we have, and the trap finds it very near. Okay?
Okay, thank you. By the way, the squirrel is the official town of Fort Park. Uh, anyone else in the group? Uh, anyone on Zoom? Oh, should I raise my hand, or?
Take a shot of putting the chat?
Okay, so put in the chat if you would like to speak. Hi, uh, Mr. Rannasin?
Yes.
Uh, can you, can you name an address, please? I'm sorry, what?
Ten Rose.
Oh, okay, can you give me name and address, please, Mr. Rose?
Sure. So you're on Sima? Ten Rose.
Can you spell that, please, for the caller?
Oh, uh, sure. I hear you're Sima, so.
Yes, the caller is not, not the caller, I'm sorry. Uh, let me, I'll, I'll begin first. R-A-N-A-S-I-N-G-H-E, is that correct?
Correct.
And your address?
Ten Rose.
Ten Rose, sorry, okay.
Uh, can I ask two questions for our other one?
Yes, two.
All right, so, uh, one, small volume question and one larger volume question. So, uh, you know, there are a bunch of, I found the line for uh sidewalk repairs, uh, and I think I was looking at nineteen, where it was quite a little, it was kind of budgeted. Can you tell me the page you're looking at, if you have a, if you can't find the, is that, have you looked at it, or something else?
Yes, it's in there. You know what page you were looking at, uh, in the old budget?
Sidewalk of Village twenty-nine.
Uh, is it page twenty-nine?
No, the, I'm sorry, it may not be the PDF page. It's page twenty-nine of the budget, which is in the upper right corner. It'll say page twenty-nine of page fifty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine, I have it, okay, then.
The budget this year, fifty thousand, it's been, was that fifty thousand last year? It's been a little lower. There have been, there have been years where uh, we did not have as many, as much damage done, like, for instance, in twenty twenty-one, due to the hurricane studies, uh, we need to take down a number of trees, because we had to, and then taking down the trees, the current side of that damage, and in those cases, the village lived safely.
And there's a second code for residents' expense, uh, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars in code four fifty-eight. It's two, two ones, two ones down.
And that is typically done when we do the sidewalk uh repair program, which we rotate throughout the village, uh, throughout the, you know, every, every year. And I believe that this year, we're going to be doing uh the West End. I don't know if we're going to get the roads, but it might be further towards the Fort Park, though, the school. But the West End is probably inside.
Is there any process to pay for freezing?
Yeah, then, and then by the time we finish the whole cycle, it's usually time for the uh, person to go back to, so, yeah, the West End has been, you know, been a little , you know, the focus of the city of York.
Exactly. Uh, okay, and then uh, my question was, on the uh, on the police lawyer, did you explain what the combination, uh, or actually means? I think it's called a combination date, uh, and, you know, looking at the actual numbers in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, eighteen, which would be around one hundred and twenty, some odd thousand dollars, uh, and recently, I think, uh, yeah, the, actually, twenty-nine, can you just send to five or something thousand dollars in the annual, it was the department, and this year, they also did that. Can you explain what that is and why that comes?
Sure. Sure, so the termination pay, uh, police officers, as they, you know, work throughout their career, they do accrue time, whether it's sick time or cop time, and contractually, uh, any time that's left at the end of their careers, we have contractuality to pay it. Um, and due to the number of retirements over the last two or three years, that number has increased typically is paid out over a six-year period of time. So as we go through cycles of uh, police officers retiring, we did have to do a number of them a year ago, um, that'll be on the budget for the next couple of years, because it's contractual obligations.
Got you, that's helpful. Um, and is there any insurance policy where you apply that, that covers an evolution? Will any police misconduct, or what are settlements?
What we have?
Just turn it on.
We have um, coverage for uh, personal liability, um, with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars self-insure retention, you mean? The village will be liable to pay the first two hundred and fifty thousand, and then insurance kicking after that, uh, so it would have to also be a determination of being covered under that for negligence, um, specific police misconduct, um.
And, yeah, there is, I mean, over the years, you can see that the, the training level of the police department has been increasing, so hopefully that, that, not both, they all get in current training. Commissioner McAllister, who is at the forefront of a lot of uh, different ideas and training that he feels that his department requires, depending on, you know, what is going on in the world, around us, locally and globally.
That's a good point, Mayor. If you'd like, you can read what's on our website, which is the Police Reform Plan, goes extensively into the training of police departments, you see, and they're absolutely correct, I think. Commissioner McAllister, not police departments either way, uh, as far as training of police officers. It'd be very interesting for you to have to see in the red.
Thanks for being able to allow this, uh, necklace, John, and, uh, so, we appreciate the, uh, all your, uh, uh, so.
Yeah, it's a great place to live, and, you know, we're part of, all of us that work in the village and volunteer in the village, and those of you that keep it away, it's thank you for your time. Is there anyone else on Zoom?
Yes, Jessica. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Could you give your name and address?
Hi, Jessica Alfonse, one twenty-five, Mayfair.
Oh, Jessica, and you decided to go on Zoom, not friendly, you fell over a library building.
How are you? Oh, you know, I'm sorry, I just went to the town, I had to leave, because you don't have a big, my grandpa. Um, I just wanted to say, you know, obviously, that, you know, you said Fort Park is a great place, we all, we all feel that same way, and a big part of that is the library, and the fact that the library, if I'm reading this correctly, is four percent of the village budget, and, you know, the police gets twenty-five percent, and they're just, you know, just worth, it just seems very, there's not much I can do there, and I just, that's really a late comment. It's a big, it's a big, big difference.
And uh, you're also now a library member, so we are looking forward to your input, uh, about the coming year after a late appointment. I know you will. Uh, anyone else on Zoom? Uh, seeing, uh, as the board members have any additional comments? I'd just like to add for motion to reserve decision and close public hearing. Building industry, Mayor, is a bold initiative.
Trustee Stewart? Trustee Chair? Uh, the mayor of Miami, and Mayor of Charlotte.
Aye, and uh, thanks to everyone who came out tonight, hopefully you have, and you are, you know, probably families and, uh, 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 and,